Good afternoon. During the declared emergency in the city of Toronto, Committee of Adjustment virtual public hearings are being conducted via WebEx, an online digital platform and will be livestreamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. These measures are necessary to comply with physical distancing requirements and a provincial order that limits attendance at public gatherings. My name is Nancy Omen and I will be chairing this hearing. Panel members participating via WebEx and who can be seen and heard are Carl Niffel, Peter Reed, and Larry Clay. City staff will be assisting us throughout the meeting, including moderating the WebEx platform. Agents, applicants, and other interested parties participating in this virtual hearing, registered in advance and will be connecting through WebEx using a compatible electronic device. Their participation will be through audio only. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is a traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and it is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment for the city of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for: Variances from the provisions to the zoning bylaw that apply to the property; Permission to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses; And consent to sever property to create new lots. Anyone who wants to receive a copy of the committee's decision for an application must submit a written request by email to the general email address for the Committee of Adjustment Toronto and East York District Office. Please include your name, address, and email address. All Committee of Adjustment and T-Lab notifications and appeal updates will be sent by email only. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, decisions may be appealed to the Toronto local appeal body, also known as T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances to the local planning appeal tribunal, known as LPAT. Appeal instructions will be set out at the bottom of the committee's decision. Participants who have registered in advance will be connected to this virtual hearing and will be muted automatically upon entry. When your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant will proceed with his or her presentation, if required, and the committee may ask questions and/or take the matter directly into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you're reaching the five-minute mark. When addressing the committee, please speak slowly. Clearly state your name and address. Please confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. Where required, the applicant or agent will proceed first with a presentation of the application, and then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have completed their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent will be unmuted and will have the opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion and the application will be taken into committee for a decision. Please note, the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure that the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice are informed of the changes. Members or staff, do you have any interest to declare in the time slots this afternoon? No? Madam Deputy Secretary-Treasurer, are there any requests to withdraw an application?
Not in the afternoon, no.
Okay, so we will now proceed with... Go ahead.
I was just going to say to the members, when the Chair is outlining the applications, perhaps this afternoon, we will try having you unmute yourselves. So when she asks if you want a presentation, you can say yes or no. Because at that point, we have the item on the screen and she can't see you nodding your heads. So just when she starts outlining, just unmute, be very quiet, and then once she's asked if anyone wants a presentation, we don't want one, you can just press mute again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Deputy Secretary-Treasurer. All right, we'll start with item number 11, 439 Clinton Street. Panel members, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have a staff report from the acting supervisor, tree protection, asking for forestry condition number two. Correspondence in support from number 437, which is adjacent. Correspondence in opposition from number 726. Do we have the agent on the line, as well as the opposition?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can I have you identify yourself, please? Name and address for the record.
Sure, my name is Tay Rook, planner for the owners of the property at 439 Clinton Street.
Okay, and I have... Do I have Ms. Milena Catalano on the line?
Yes, that's correct. I will unmute her right now.
Okay, Ms. Catalano, you're here to speak to the application? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Any questions for that?
I don't know what's...
At this present time, we have no questions. You just want to see what they're proposing.
Okay, so are you here to speak to the application? Are you in opposition to the application? Do you need a presentation?
To be honest, we're not sure exactly what their plans are, so we're just trying to see what exactly they want to do, and then we will... We have any questions, we will bring forward once they present their presentation.
All right, I'll... Thank you. We're going to mute you then, and I'll have the applicant give us a brief presentation then, okay? So Mr. Reek, I'm going to start the clock now. You have five minutes.
Sure. Good afternoon. The proposal is to construct... To alter an existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a front and rear third-story addition with a third-floor terrace. There are variances before you, five variances before you. Variances related to FSI. Three variances related to the exterior main wall heights, front, rear, and sides, and also a side yard setback variance, being variance number five. The FSI that we're seeking is 0.92 times the lot area of the lot, whereas .6 is permitted. Throughout the neighborhood, what you find is densities as high as up to 1.2x in terms of FSI, but .92 is something that's within the range of the existing context of the developments that have occurred in terms of minor variances in form of additions, in the form of new developments. And what you also will note, and I'm sure the committee is well aware, this is a very tightly knit neighborhood in terms of houses being very close to each other, of varying heights, various dwelling types and dwelling tenures. The variance related to the main wall height, front, side, and rear, I would submit to the committee that there is no overall building height that's being sought. The overall building height that's permitted in the area is 10 meters. The overall building height that's being proposed is 9.98, so just slightly under the 10-meter requirement. In addition to that, the resulting built form in terms of massing, in terms of roof lines will be consistent with adjacent dwellings of the immediate neighbors and also throughout the neighborhood as well. Three-story dwellings are typical in this neighborhood in the form of singles, semis, townhouses, and even look-up apartments that are found in the area. And with regards to the last variance for zero-meter side yard setback on the north side, this is an existing side yard setback situation. So if you refer to the site plan, you'll note that the dwelling itself is right on the lot line on the north side yard. And you'll also note that, as you've noted in the proposed third-story addition portion, there's a .21 meter setback on the north side. But we're maintaining the existing condition on the north side yard. And what you also note is on the east side yard, even though a variance isn't needed, there was a continuous effort to be placed to ensure that a proper setback of 1.95 and also 2.16 meter side yard variances on the south side was provided to provide for some spatial separation. You'll also note that there's no variances relating to building length, depth, also front yard or side yard setback, or rear yard setbacks, pardon me. The building itself is 14.98 meters, where 17 meters is permitted. So in the rear walls of the proposal and also the third-story addition is slightly less than the adjacent properties. And then there's the existing two-story portion at the rear, which is an existing structure that is in line and is very consistent with the adjacent properties on either side. You'll also... As the committee members noted before, there is a letter of support provided by 437 Clinton Street, which is to the south. We did reach out to 441. I did have conversations with them. However, no correspondence was received. You'll also note that there was a letter of opposition provided by 726 Manning Avenue, which is the street to the east. And it's... 726 is actually five properties removed from the subject site, so it's five properties to the southeast. And in their objection letter, they indicated in terms of views, but I would submit to you, being five properties removed from the site on the next street over to the east in terms of views or overlooks or massing, that be any concerns, I would be minimal at best and it would have no impact on them whatsoever. The resulting built form, as a result of these variances, will be consistent in terms of what you would see in terms of a streetscape, in terms of massing and built form. And none of the variances creates any adverse impacts. That's not typical or already experienced in this very tightly knit neighborhood today. There is a nerthern forestry condition of condition number two, which is the standard condition, which we are satisfied with. Planning department was consulted. They have no issues on the applications and no other departments have commented on this application as well. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, do you have questions of the applicant now or do you want to wait until we hear from the opposition? Okay, so we'll hear from Ms. Catalano. Are you there? Okay.
Ms. Catalano, I'm the only person with the ability to unmute you, and I think when I unmute, you mute yourself. So I'm going to unmute you right now.
Sorry about that.
Oh, there you go, okay.
Okay, so we can hear you now. So you have five minutes, if there's anything you would like to say or if you have a question.
Sure, thank you so much. There was... It was mentioned that there was a letter of approval
Of support.
By the owner of 4... or by... Of support by 437. Now, was that a letter from the owner of the property or the tenant of the property? Because that property is a rental property and right now there is a rental person living there.
I don't know if it was the tenant or the owner. We only have the name.
Is the owner's name Joe Galardi on the property letter?
So then, yeah. For 437, it's... The last name is Gugliardi.
Yeah, so it's Joe, okay.
Okay, so we do have that support letter on record.
Any other questions?
So, I guess, yeah, the committee would like to know if you're sort of in support or on the fence, or if you're opposed, or you're concerned.
Are you... Did you hear what they said?
I did not. No, I can't hear. So who's... So first of all, okay, just a second. So first of all, we need the speakers identified. So I have a Rocco and a Milena, which is you, Catalano. Now, if both of you are going to be providing comments, you have now three and a half minutes left between the two of you.
Yeah, so we both don't have no concerns right now?
We just wanted to know what was going on, how high it's going on back there.
Okay, I can't hear you, but the committee doesn't really know what's going on in the neighborhood. We strictly are dealing with the variances for the application for what they are proposing to build.
Yeah, we just wanted to... Myself and my father-in-law, Rocco, just wanted to know exactly what was happening. Unfortunately, we are not planned... We are unable to read the plans. So we wanted to tune in today to just find out exactly what their intentions were with their development. Yeah, we're not contesting it or nothing. We're just tuning in to find out exactly what their intentions were today.
Okay, so basically, all that this committee knows and the only thing that we're looking at is whether or not the variances that they have put before us in order to construct a front and rear third-story addition with third-floor terrace, whether that's appropriate for the neighborhood. That's the only thing that this committee will look at. If I would... You know, I would suggest you try to speak to the owner or the agent to have more detailed questions answered if you're concerned about construction and all that kind of stuff.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, do you have any questions of the applicant? No? Seeing none, so we'll take it into committee. You're all muted, by the way.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Excuse me, I don't have a lot of difficulty with this application. The variances that it proposed look quite substantial, but when you review the actual built form and the way in which they're being implemented, I think that the proposal has actually entered into the community and enhanced the community character and appearance. And on that basis, I don't have any difficulties with that, and I'm envious of the application.
And I'm fine with this one as well.
Me too. I appreciate that the density is just a third floor and remain is locked into the existing footprint of the house. So I'll just put forward a motion to approve with third forestery condition number two.
Okay, do I have a second for that motion? Sorry, Carl, was that you?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion to approve, including forestry condition number two, moved by Mr. Reed, seconded by Mr. Niffel, all in favor.
I'll call you right back.
Okay, your application has been unanimously approved.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item is item number 12, 30 Fernwood Park Avenue. Panel members, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. Justification of variances from Daniel Wang, the applicant, as well as presentation materials. Email correspondence from traffic planning. Six form letters in support from 24 Fernwood, 33 Fernwood, and I believe it's apartment one, Fernwood, and 25 Balsam Avenue. We have correspondence in opposition from 26 Fernwood and 32 and 34 Fernwood, as well as number 36. Okay, is the applicant on the line?
Yes, I am.
Okay, just to confirm, there's no other speakers? All right, can I have you identify yourself, name and address for the record, please?
Sure, good afternoon, Madam Chair and the committee members. My name is Daniel Wang, owner, applicant, at 30 Fernwood Park Avenue.
Okay, panel members, do you need a presentation or can we go straight to questions?
Need a presentation.
No presentation? Okay, does... Do any of the members have a question of Mr. Wang?
Is there anyone speaking, Chair, in opposition today?
No, there's nobody speaking on this, other than the agent.
Then maybe we could ask the agent to... I mean, it seems to be a lot of concern about parking in the back. So maybe we could ask the agent to respond to some of the concerns that I'm sure he's seen in the letters of opposition.
Okay, Mr. Wang, can you please respond to the question that Mr. Clay just put forward?
I could certainly do that. And what I could share is, I believe it would be important to share some of the facts. Fernwood Park Avenue is a unique street that doesn't connect to Queen Street. It's a short street on Hazel and ends at Balsam, Palm Beach. There are 52 houses on this street. Street parking is only limited, permitted on one side of the street, meaning the west side, where the subject property is on. Let's say 52 houses are equally divided with 26 houses on each side, east side and west side. So in our best case, we will only have 26 street parking spots, ignoring prior high-end driveway openings. So I think it's really important to know that. Like, there's 23 parking spots for a street that has 37 multi-unit houses. That's like 37.8% and 15 single-family houses, which is 28.8%. Ironically, there are just as many duplexes, 11, and four complexes, four, on this street. Only 15, which is also 28.8%. And no, there is basically zero rental banking on this street. So I have read the opposition letter dated 24 from Steve Bain, who lives in 26 Fernwood Park. He lives in a single-family home with no parking of their own. Yet he has two cars and a motorcycle. He parks usually on the east side of my driveway. That takes up 2.5 out of the 26 possible parking spots. So I'm really not sure why Mr. Bain is objecting here when four of my six variances do with keeping my four... My three parking spaces and not compete with them for limited street parking. And then the recent June 17th opposition letters from husband and wife, Alexander, Sandy, and Susan Walker, both live at 36 Fernwood Park, is recognized... Their house is recognized as a three-dwelling unit and they have no parking either. So I'm not sure why Mr. Bain... Just like Mr. Bain at 26 Fernwood Park, why the Walkers are objecting here and four of my six variances is due with keeping my three parking spaces and not compete with them for limited parking, limited street parking. And the answer is simple. The Walkers are renting their parking space from Irene Bauer, American-based owner of 100% rental property, which is 32, 32A, 34, and 34A Fernwood Park. And they basically have four parking spaces back there. And the Walkers are renting one of the four parking spaces from Ms. Bauer, for her, which is... She mentioned her opposition letter is for her tenants. So basically, I'll leave it at that. And does that answer some of the questions?
Mr. Clay, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess it addresses the capacity issue. There seems to be some concern whether, in fact, you can accommodate three vehicles in the back without, you know, parking on the right-of-way. Is that a concern?
Could I answer that?
Yeah, that's your question to you.
Yeah, I could... So yeah, sir, that'd be great. Because right now, we have a bin, a 14-yard bin, right at the northern border, that Ms. Bauer is questioning. So basically, there's a 14-yard bin there and I have a large van occupying basically all three parking spaces that I'm asking for to keep. So that's been there since October of 2019, and it's still there. Basically, on and off this bin. And we have large trucks going in there, taking the bin out and maneuvering just fine. And the people that are having issues with are the tenants. They have subcompact cars, and there's really no issue since then. There's been no reports of accidents or anything like that. So when we can maneuver trucks in large vans, and these are like Sprinter vans, they're like 27, almost 27 feet long, you know, 7.7 feet wide, all three parking spaces are basically accommodated, are basically taken up, especially with the bin. So there really is no issue with maneuverability. That's what I'm trying to share here. We had a test for eight months now, eight months' test, whether that is really an issue.
Okay, are there any further questions, panel members? Sorry, Carl, were you saying something? Because you're muted. You're still muted. Now you're okay.
Okay, sorry. Mr. Wang, I'm not sure where it is, but in one of the opposition letters, further to Mr. Clay's question, seemed to be some suggestion that the right-of-way isn't actually functioning as a right-of-way, but it's used for parking. And if it's used for parking, it inhibits the ability to get to parking spaces on other property. Could you... Have I got that right, or could you speak to that issue?
I could speak to that, Carl. I'm basing mine on the site, the actual survey. I'm not sure whether Irene Bauer, the opposition, the owner of the property, is citing her measurements. But with my site survey, the actual survey, it shows that I am not in the right-of-way, the rectangular right-of-way that she's speaking of.
Okay.
Okay, so I don't know where she gets her measurements from, but I'm basing it on the survey that's been... It's part of the package that I have. Correct, that's it.
Okay, any further questions, panel members? So I... Sorry, I couldn't see. Are there questions? No?
No.
All right, we'll take it into committee then. Discussion and a motion. Like, I'll just start by saying that transportation didn't weigh in on this at all with respect to the parking. They had no concerns whatsoever. The three parking spots are existing. I'm not sure that this is a big change in terms of impact to the neighborhood. So I would be inclined to support the application.
Yeah, me as well. I support the application. I don't... I had some difficulty understanding the opposition's concern about parking. Not sure that I'm any clearer, but I do feel, like the Chairman, that it doesn't look like it's a problem that will occur subsequent to this application being approved. Looks like the situation would, in many respects, continue to... I don't personally believe in approving these variances.
I'm in agreement as well. So I'm just going to put a motion to approve with no conditions, please.
All right, I have a motion to approve, moved by Mr. Reed. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Niffel, all in favor. Your application has been approved unanimously.
Thank you, committee member, Madam Chair.
Okay. The next item is item number 13, 11 Prince Rupert Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, covering letter from Julia Borquet, the agent. We have reports from community planning and the forestry has asked for condition number one. We have two form letters in support, signed by number seven and nine Prince Rupert Avenue, so that's on both adjacent neighborhoods... Or I'm sorry, adjacent to the property, sorry. Do we have a speaker still listed?
Yes, Madam Chair, the speaker willing to speak in interest is online right now.
Okay, if the agent could please identify herself, name and address for the record.
Julia Burke.
Okay, and your address?
33 Everly Road.
You guys have the address for the agent? She's on the list. Okay, could I... Could I have Ms. Clark on the line just for a moment?
Hi, this is Sharon Clark.
Hi.
I live at nine Prince Rupert.
Sorry, you're Sharon Clark, you're at nine Prince Rupert?
Correct.
Are you speaking in support or in opposition to this application?
Basically, support. What I'd like to point out is that they're requesting an apartment entrance at the front of the house. That would be our preference, because we have a shared laneway.
Okay.
And if the entrance is at the front of the house, the tenants won't be using the shared laneway, and it won't be as much of an imposition on us.
So have you seen the plans?
Yes.
Okay, and you're in agreement, then, with what you've seen?
Yes.
So are you... Do you need a full presentation? Or basically, what we have before us is what you've seen?
What's before you is what I've seen. I'm happy with it.
Okay.
Feel free to present if that's needed, but... it if that's needed, but I'm fine.
Okay, I'll confirm that with the applicant then. Can I have the applicant back on the line, please, the agent?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, can you please confirm that what was shared with number nine, Sharon Clark, that that's in fact what we have before us?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Panel members, do you need a presentation, or can we go straight to questions, if there are any? Are there any questions? No questions? Okay, so we'll take it into committee for a decision then.
Madam Chairman, I think this is a very straightforward application. Normally, basement walkout would be a concern for Planning Department, but the report indicates that subject to it being orientated and proposed exactly as it is on the plans, Planning Department doesn't have a concern. There are other basement walkouts in the area that may be slightly proposed. I don't see a thing about people saying it was going to create a negative impact on the community, and therefore I recommend approval of the application, or I move approval of the application, subject to the Planning Department report, and the condition, and the forestry condition.
Okay, I have a motion to approve moved by Mr. Niffel to including forestry condition number one, as well as the condition in the planning report dated April 27. Do I have a second or?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Reed. All in favor? Your application has been unanimously approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is item number 14, 359 Markham Street. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, a staff report from planning, as well as forestry asking for condition number one again, three form letters in support from 355, 357, and 358 Markham Street. If I could, and we don't have any speakers that I'm aware of, and if I could have the agent please identify himself for the record.
Hi, my name is Mike De Oliveira. I'm from Replacement Design, representing the owners of 359 Markham Street.
Thank you. Panel members, do you need a presentation?
No.
No. Do any of you have any questions of Mr. De Oliveira? Seeing none? Mr. Clay, you're okay? Do you have any questions? Okay, so we'll take it into committee then. You're all muted, by the way.
Yeah, I'll jump in. I think this is extremely minor, right? There's many porches on the street and on immediate houses, so adding a porch with an often closed room, I think, is, has zero negative impacts on the neighborhood. So if there are no other comments from the members, I would perform a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I move to approve subject to plannings, two conditions, and urban forestry condition one.
Okay, motion to...
Seconded.
Sorry, who seconded that? Mr. Clay?
Sorry, that's me, Chair.
Okay. Yeah, forestry condition number one. I can't remember where I found it, but it was there. Yeah. It was definitely there.
I had condition number one listed.
Yeah. It's for Markham Street. It's on the second page of the urban forestry report at the end. Okay, did you see it? Okay. So I have a motion to approve moved by Mr. Reed, seconded by Mr. Clay, including planning conditions in this June 16 report, as well as forestry condition number one. All in favor? Your application has been unanimously approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, same to you. Okay, the next item is item number 15, 334 Russell Hill Road. Panel members, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, a previous decision affecting the subject property. We have forestry asking for condition number two, and correspondence in opposition from 336 Russell Hill. Okay, do we have speakers?
So the agent is present in the hearing right now. There are three people that would like to speak in interest, and none of them are present, so I can give them a call.
Three, I have two.
So there were two listed, but there was one additional. Okay, so just the two.
Okay, so are you going to call the people that want to speak, or? Okay, can I have the agent identify himself while you're doing that? Okay, Mr. Mar-
I'm the agent here.
Okay, Mr. Marchesi, can you please identify yourself for the record, name and address?
Yes, my name is Chris Marchesi, planner at Design Plan Services, 900 East Mall, Suite 300.
Okay, we're just-
M9B6K2.
Okay, thanks. We're just going to try to contact the residents at 301 Lonsdale who are listed as speakers before we proceed here, okay?
Sounds good, yes.
Thanks.
Hi, Ms. Geddes, are you there? Gail, are you there? Try the other one, okay. I don't believe they picked up.
Mr. Marchesi, thanks for your patience. We're still attempting to contact them now via email, so just bear with us for a few more minutes, please.
No worries, thank you.
Madam Chair, I've sent an email to the registrants and advised them that they are not going to be connecting to the meeting that will proceed without them.
No?
I think at this point, we've called them. Have you seen, did they show up at all? No?
No, I don't think either of them picked up the phone call.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The questions I have on this application flow from the letter of objection from Randy Osterjek, and I'm wondering if they don't call in, if we might ask the applicant to respond to that particular letter. Some of it I'm not concerned with, but I am-
So just, Ms., sorry to cut you off. Just to be clear, the letter is not from the people listed to speak. The people listed to speak are at 301 Lonsdale, and the letter is from 336 Russell Hill. But by all means, we can have the applicant speak to some of your questions and issues in the interim, because I'm going to give it another four minutes for them to respond to the email, because staff have tried calling two numbers now and emailed to the person we have on record, persons. So I guess at this stage, Mr. Marchesi, are you there? I'll see if the panel members have any questions. And as Mr. Niffel said, perhaps you've seen the letter from 336. Can you just speak to their concerns?
Yes, not a problem. I have been notified of the letter and have reviewed their letter coming over from 336 Russell Hill Road. Just some context here, 336 Russell Hill Road is located along the northern property line. They mentioned five points that they put forward of concerns. First one about privacy on the north side with the second-floor deck. I've been in extensive conversation with Catherine Young at the planning department. We've scaled back the balcony dramatically from the original proposal that was put forward. We've lowered it from 30 square meters to 11 square meters. We've divided the balcony into two different pieces, so it can't be used as one large balcony. And we've also agreed to put screening along both the northern and southern portions of the balcony to mitigate any privacy concerns. Number two, from the pool deck drawing, there's no issue with the pool deck, because this is just the grade change that goes down. The deck's just going to be consistent with all the other, tons of pools in the area, the deck's going to be consistent with all the other rear patios in the neighborhood that go down to the pool just because of a slight elevation change from the front of the backyard to the rear of the backyard. Number three, in regards to the fence, it's not a planning concern here. It will be dealt with on a separate matter, and we will be replacing the fence, no concern there. Number four, on the plans, there's a tree being planted. If you look at the site plan, the revised site plan, there was an existing, and a permit issued for a new garage to be constructed at the rear of the property. Through that application, the architect is dealing with forestry on that tree that's existing there. Catherine Young has asked us to plant a new tree there where the proposed new tree to be planted is located on the site plan. So that is just following Catherine's request in planting that new site plan, or that new tree there on the site plan. In regards to number five, the safety issue, once again, not a planning concern. We're not in front of the committee for any variances regarding the fence. It is an issue that we will be dealing with on a separate matter upon the decision from the committee here today, and something we will be looking after to make sure that we get that all legalized and figured out after today.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions for Mr. Marchesi, panel members?
No.
Okay. Just, Mr. Marchesi, is that the screening you mentioned on the deck that you agreed to for the people at 336, is that on the plans?
Yes, it is. It's not on the site plan because it's actually on the second level, but if you go to the second-floor proposed plan, you will see it there labeled. It is bubbled, because we bubbled the revisions to make it very clear as to what they were. And you'll see privacy screening on both sides of that balcony, the northern and southern side of the balcony.
Okay, great. All right, the five minutes have passed. Nobody's emailed back, nobody's called back. So, all right, panel members, let's take it into a committee for a decision.
Yeah, I'll kick off. I reviewed this whole thing, and I didn't really have any problems with any of the proposed variances. They all seem pretty minor. These are big lots in a neighborhood that's composed of big lots. The main issue from the opposition was overlook, and I think, you know, the proponent seems to have addressed that fairly well. I wondered whether the Lonsdale concern was similarly about overlook, so we don't know that. But I, you know, I don't really have any problems with this proposal. I thought it was in keeping with the neighborhood and the types of development that's going on there.
Okay, any further comments?
I agree completely.
Okay, who wants to do the honors?
If that's the case, I'll move a motion to approve this proposal, subject to the urban forestry condition.
Number two.
Number two. Yes.
Okay, I have a motion to approve, including forestry condition number two, moved by Mr. Clay. Do I have a second or?
Sure, I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Reed. All in favor? Your application has been unanimously approved, and we now stand recessed until 2:30.
I've agreed to, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, the next item is item number 16, 224 Howland Avenue. Panel members, we have before us a copy of the Plan of Survey Site Plan, Floor Plans, and Elevations, a set of plans with the corrected title block, a covering letter from T.M. Sandborn, the agent, staff report from Tree Protection, and they're asking for Forestry number two. We have support from number 249, as well as form letters from 226 and 220 in support. We have correspondence from the Annex Residence Association expressing concern, and opposition from number 223 Howland Avenue. If I could have the agent please identify herself, name and address for the record.
My name's Rain Sandborn. I'm the architect of 224 Howland Avenue. My address is the Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Which person do you have on the line?
Robin McKechnie is on the line.
Okay, can you just put her on for me, please?
Hi, Robin McKechnie here.
Hi.
I apologize, I thought I was on with camera, but apparently I'm not.
No, all the people, applicants and people that are deputing from the outside, it's audio only.
Okay.
I just have a question. Are you in opposition, or are you speaking in support?
I'm speaking in support.
You're speaking in support. So I, let me just, before I come back to you, panel members, do you need a presentation on this application then? Okay, Mr. McKechnie, can I, before I go to the applicant then, if we have any questions, could you just, I'll give you five minutes to, up to five minutes to state your support, or why you support it?
I'll be brief.
Okay.
The, I live essentially across the street from the applicant. They recently did a renovation that went very, very smoothly. They're very, very considerate of the neighbors in the area in the way they did it. And as a result, I have full confidence that they will complete this renovation in the spirit of the community, which is essentially doing it in a way that, that goes smoothly, and that is considerate of all of us around them. I know that they do have two children, who will get a lifetime out of enjoyment out of this, and I truly hope that those of us in the area can support this project, because I know that they're considerate in the way they go about these things.
Okay, thank you very much. 251B Howland, that's your address, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks. Okay, if I can have the agent back, panel members, do you have any questions of the There are no questions?
I'll just, if I could, Chair, just, oh, I'm sorry, Carl, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Larry.
Go ahead, Mr. Clay.
I noticed that the, some of the concerns, it's hard to say exactly what the concern was, but I thought, when I was reviewing the material, I read somewhere where you indicated that the amount of structure, dwelling structure, that is being proposed is actually less than what is there currently. Is that correct?
That's correct, 24 percent.
Right, so you're actually shrinking the footprint a little bit, but adding a pool?
Yes.
Okay.
The pool is permitted, because it's considered open space, landscape open space. So it doesn't affect our LOS, which is 48.2 percent.
Right, no, that's fine. I just wanted to confirm, I thought that, I just wanted to be clear about, I guess, coverage more than anything.
Yes, there's a carport in the rear of the property, which we are removing and reducing in size, and there is a garage, a historic garage, which we are removing the shed, and again, reducing in size.
Thank you.
All right, are there any, Mr. Niffel, did you have a question?
I have one question. The concern that I would have is the inclusion of a washroom in the garage, and the overriding concern is that that building not be used for habitable residential purposes. Would you have any difficulty with a condition that stated that?
Absolutely. They have no, they have no intention of using it as a residence, it's strictly a changeroom for the pool.
Yeah, fair enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further questions, panel members? Seeing none, we'll take it into committee for a decision.
Yeah, I'm, again, I thought the requesting branches were relatively minor. I think that the actual impact on the lot, an impact on budgets and neighbors is minimal. As Carl, I'd noticed that they were plumbing the pavilion as well, so that's an important consideration. I think it's being quite tastefully done. It's a large lot as well, so I think it could quite easily accommodate these additions. So I'm happy to move approval, subject to the condition that Carl raised about ensuring that this is not be converted into habitable space, and also subject to urban forestry condition. Help me out, Chair.
Two.
Two, thank you.
Okay. All right, I have a motion to approve, moved by Mr. Clay, including a condition that the pavilion not be used as habitable space, and forestry condition number two. Do I have a second, or?
Second that.
Seconded by Mr. Niffel, all in favor. The application has been unanimously approved with that condition.
Thank you.
Item number 17, 17 Coal Ridge Avenue. We have before us a copy of the Plan of Survey Site Plan, Floor Plans, and Elevations, correspondence in support from number 19, which is the adjacent property, as well as a 47 signature petition in support, signed by residents on Coal Ridge, Strathmore, Milverton, and Cedarvale. If I could have the agent please identify himself, name and address for the record.
My name is Alfred Ajaporn, 87 Widenick Crescent, Angus, Ontario.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, I don't think we need a presentation. Do any of you have any questions? No questions? Mr. Clay, did you have a question? You guys are muted.
No, Chair, I have no questions.
Okay, so we'll take it into committee then.
All right, thank you.
Don't go yet.
Chair, I'd like to move approval of the application.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to move approval of the application.
Okay. Do I have a?
Do I have any conditions?
There's no conditions. Do I have a second, or? Mr. Niffel's moved approval of the application, as he feels it meets support.
I'll second that, Chair.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Reed, all in favor. The application has been unanimously approved. The application has been unanimously approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. Next item, item number 18, 483 Pape Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan, of the survey site plan, floor plans, and elevations, correspondence in support from number 485, which is next door. Can I have the agent, please identify himself, name and address for the record?
Hi, it's Scott Sloggett, 483 Pape Avenue.
Thank you. Panel members, I don't think we need a presentation on this one. Do you have any questions of the applicant? No? Okay, we'll take it into committee, then. Discussion?
Sure, I'll jump in. I don't think there's much to discuss. I think this is just enclosing a porch, and there aren't that many enclosed ones in the area, but I can see no negative impacts on neighbors or the neighborhood in general. And there's a lot of support behind this one, so I'm going to move to approve with no conditions.
All righty. Do I have a seconder?
Seconded.
Okay, motion to approve moved by Mr. Reed, seconded by Mr. Niffel. All in favor? Your application has been unanimously approved.
Thank you.
The next item is item number 19, 315 Russell Hill Road. We have before us a copy of the Plan of Survey Site Plan, Floor Plans, and Elevations, a covering letter from Mr. Dean, a decision, a previous decision affecting the subject property, correspondence in opposition from Charles, is it Dine or Dean, at 313 Russell Hill Road, whom I believe is also listed as a speaker?
Yes, and he is present in the hearing.
Okay, thank you. Can I have the agent, please identify himself for the record, name and address?
Yes, it's Richard Wangle, architect, 102 Avenue Road, Toronto.
Thank you. Mr., is it, is it Dime, or is that, am I pronouncing?
D-I-M-E.
I'm sorry?
Dime. Dime, D-I-M-E, dime, like money.
All right, Mr. Dine. I'm going to have the applicant give us a presentation of the application, and then I will come back to you, and then you'll have five minutes to state your concerns. Okay, Mr. Wangle, I'm starting the clock now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a proposal for a one-story addition to the south side of the dwelling. You should have in the presentation material the original proposal, which was to do a tandem double garage. Since some discussion with the client, we have amended a proposal, and we are now reducing it to a single garage, which is lining up with the rear of the house. So that's the original design that you see before you, and there should be a subsequent package that shows, there should be another site plan that shows the reduced proposal. In the original design, we had a floor space index that was going to be .6, and through discussions with the client, it was now reduced to .5342. I'm just wondering if the presentation material is available to show the reduction?
They're just looking for it. It's in the covering letter.
Okay. So, well, there we go. So the, the blue area is the area that showed the previous extension, and that's now been removed. So just the crosshatched area at the back is the proposed one-story garage that has a connection to the indoor component of the house. It's for a young family, they have just had their first child, and they want to create a mudroom entrance from this garage. It should be noted that the neighbor's house, you see a gap between the neighbor's house and our property line, which is a south property line. That's a downward ramp to a below-grade garage, so there is a gap there. And then the wall that faces our property, the closest one to it, is a blank wall at that point. We've done some research in the area, and further in the package, you'll see a density map where we're asking for 53.42 percent, and you'll see in the area, there's many examples of over 70 and 80 percent in the, within a two-minute walk of this house. I lived just down the block. I'll keep my presentation short. There is a 3D model that shows the design that's sympathetic to the style of the house. We're preserving all the character and adding to it. It'll be one more page over. You'll be able to see, there we are. And that's the proposed garage with some skylight above it to bring light in, and we're just doing the same matching stone. I believe it's, it's a minor proposal that does meet the four tests of the Planning Act, and is a positive addition to the house.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wangle. Mr. Dine, you have five minutes to speak to the proposal, and then, Mr. Wangle, you can come back after that and rebut to the concerns raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Wangle starts off by saying there's a reduction from a double garage. I'm really not sure what relevance that would possibly have on his implication of circumventing city by code. The laws are very clear, and the bylaws are clear, and the code is very clear. This is a minor variance hearing. His ground floor space actually increases 13 percent. I'm not sure what planet 13 percent would be considered a minor variance. Second point I'd like to make is he says that there's a blank wall where his two-story building is going to be. Well, that blank wall sits right in front of my office, and I'm going to be staring into the big, huge wall of a garage. Third, the setback, which is .3 meters, has been completely obliterated here. I'm going to be, he's completely moving the garage right up against and abuts to the property line. This is not reasonable. What happens if somebody has to enter the yard? There's only a very small section on the, if you're looking towards the east, there's only a small section on the, on the property on the other side of the house where one can access the backyard from. What I think they're trying to do with this proposal is, for the young family, is make a larger house by converting his garage in the future, which will already have an entrance, to make larger living space for the house, which I don't think is reasonable. I can't see where they should be allowed to circumvent the setback on the property line. There are many points. None of, none of his variances are what I would consider to be minor in nature. When you have a greater than a 10 percent floor space at ground level, this isn't minor. Minor might be considered one or 2 percent increase, not actually, by my calculations at the ground level, 12.98 percent increase. This is not reasonable, and it's certainly not a minor setback, and certainly goes against city code. I'm not sure, I'm not sure why he wants to change city code and claim this is to be a minor variance. Please, I'm finished with my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Dine. Mr. Wangle, can you please speak to the issues raised by the neighbor?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So just for the record, this is strictly a garage that is down about six steps, nine steps from the main level. There's a bit of a drop to the back, and its only intent is for a garage that's enclosed. There is a back door in the garage that will allow access through to the yard, so we have a front door and a back door. It's in the plan. Again, it's a .3 meter setback. We do have correspondence with planning, who had no objections to this, and was inconcur with us that it's reasonable, and indeed minor, and it is only a one-story structure, not a two-story structure, as opposed to what Mr. Dine had said, and it is only a one-car garage. There are several examples of this in Forest Hill, where garages have been added to the side, and I think this is a reasonable example of how to put a garage. We've kept it back. And again, the wall, the two-story wall that Mr. Dine is saying is his office, is on the property, sorry, the component of the house that's further away from the property line, and there's a door. The other wall that's immediately adjacent is a two-story wall, and I have a photo of it on my computer screen that shows it as a blank wall. If there's any questions from the committee, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. Panel members, do you have any, actually, before I ask you if you have questions, Mr. Wangle, I forgot to ask if you have any questions of the speaker, of Mr. Dine. Does, do any of you have questions of the neighbor? No? Mr. Niffel? No? Okay. All right. So does anybody have questions of the, of Mr. Wangle?
I do. Mr. Wangle, you indicated in your letter, George Dovin, that, as noted, the neighbor in his letter had requested a smaller garage. Is that the neighbor that is speaking to us today, or is that, who was it that asked you to go to propose a smaller garage?
My, my client had asked. We did a study on it, and originally, we had suggested a single garage. He had asked to explore a tandem garage, and then after he had moved into his house, he realized that he has adequate parking on his driveway, he just really needs the storage for one vehicle, and so that's why we cut it down to one vehicle, and just left a bit of circulation space around it. So when he comes out, or his wife comes out with a stroller from the car, they can actually then maneuver around the vehicle. So it's a single-car length.
Thank you, that's quite reasonable. Thank you.
Any further questions, panel members? Okay, seeing none, we'll take it into committee.
Well, I'll start off. I was looking around the neighborhood, and I think the proponent makes the point that this is not uncommon feature in some of the homes in the neighborhood, architecturally and in terms of space-wise. I kind of find that the variances are, they're modest. I think the proposal is in keeping with the character of the house and the community. Personally, I, I have no real problems with this as an application.
Any further comments?
I would echo Larry's comments, but, and also, I know that the neighbor had concerns about the side yard setback, but I know in that neighborhood, there are many, many instances, and even the neighboring house itself, with, with very low, very small side yard setbacks. So I don't, I don't see that as being negative. I think this is reasonable and worth supporting.
I agree, and I also, like Mr. Clay, I find the, the variance request rather modest, and I don't have difficulty with this application. I'd be inclined to support it.
Okay.
So I'll, oh, sorry.
You go there. You're in there.
I'll, I'll move approval of this, of this application. Subject, is there urban forestry number two?
No, I don't see any conditions.
I've got the wrong Russell Hill Road.
Yeah, the other one from before.
The other one. That's right. So there is no condition, so I will move approval of this application.
I'll second that.
Okay. So is that based on the amendments that are in the covering letter?
Yes, of course, yes. Thank you.
Okay. So I have a motion to approve the application as amended by the, by the applicant in the covering letter with the single-car garage, moved by Mr. Clay, seconded by Mr. Reed. All in favor? Okay, the application has been unanimously approved. Okay, thank you very much for every.
Madam Chair.
Okay. The next item is item number 20, 185 Queen's Key East. We have before us a copy of the Plan of Survey Site Plan, Floor Plans, and Elevations. We have two covering letters from Mr. Millward, as well as presentation materials, a previous decision affecting the subject property, email correspondence from Right-Away Management, Traffic Planning Technologist, as well as the TRCA. We have a letter recommending approval from Counselor Cressy, correspondence in support from 130 Queen's Key East, from 20 Bay Street, which is the waterfront Toronto. We have more support from 155 Merchant's Wharf, 261 Queen's Key Street East, we, as well as 3751 Victoria Park Avenue, which is the Great Gulf Company, Mankey's Waterfront Holdings at, Holdings at 125 and 155 Queen's Key East. We have concerns expressed by the solicitor for 199 Bay Street. And I believe that, I don't know, have a difference. So I have the agent, and I'm showing one speaker. Do we know if the speaker's in support, or?
Yes, both the agent and speaker are online, and I believe the individual in interest supports the application, but we can speak, we can hear from them.
Okay. Could I have the agent, please, identify himself for the record, name and address?
Good afternoon. My name is Ian Graham from R.E. Millward &amp; Associates, 1200 Bay Street, Suite 1101, Toronto.
Okay. If I could just go to Mr. Coburn, the solicitor for BLG, are you speaking in support, or are you expressing concern?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair. I'm the solicitor for the applicant, and therefore in support of the application.
Okay. Thank you. Panel members, do you need a presentation for this application? No? Can we, so we can go straight to questions, then?
My last question was the respondent of interest. There is a suggestion that there's an outstanding issue with Red Pass Soccer. Could the applicant clarify?
Sorry, just wanted to hear that clearly, Mr. Niffel. An outstanding issue concerning what?
The only, the only issue I could find, and this is a very long application, properly vetted, very good proposal, but in the Red Pass letter submitted to us, they indicate that they're still dealing with you on outstanding compatibility issues. Can you clarify, is that, is that a problem? Is that still an outstanding issue, or has it been resolved?
I believe it's still an outstanding issue, but it's something that is subject to the site plan application process. It's fundamentally dealing with the issues of how the ventilation system's going to operate in the new building, vis-à-vis concern that Red Pass may have with some concerns about odor that may emanate from their operations, and how a complaint system would be set up. And perhaps Mr. Coburn could speak more to it, because he's the solicitor dealing with Mr. Lance at St. Edmund Elliott on that issue.
Are you there, Mr. Coburn?
I am, Madam Chair. I was just waiting to come off mute. So just to, just to reinforce Mr. Graham's comments, yes, there are ongoing discussions with, with Red Pass solicitors concerning the issues they've raised, and they do, as Mr. Graham indicated, have to do with the site plan approval process, which is currently ongoing, and we anticipate that those concerns will be fully addressed through the site plan approval.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, do you have any further questions?
I do. I'm not, I don't imagine we're going to be too upset about this, but I just need to understand animation variance a little bit more. Just, maybe you can just hung a bar or two about what that is, the requirements are there?
Absolutely. If we could go to, if we could get to slide six of our presentation, Mr. Cochrill?
Give us a minute.
Thank you.
It's E3A presentation materials.
Correct, and it's entitled on that slide is Ground Floor Animation.
Could I add to Mr. Clay's question? I initially had problems with the animation requirement, but then, I believe in the presentation, you indicated that it's, it's basically an issue of interpretation and definition, because clearly there is animation there, and perhaps the original definition of animation didn't include the uses of that. So when you're answering Mr. Clay's question, I wonder if you could, if I'm correct in that?
Absolutely correct, now, Mr. Niffel. So variance is to relax the strict interpretation of the requirements for animation along at least 70 percent of the front edge of the ground. least seventy percent of the frontage of the ground floor, and this is not consistent with the academic program proposed for this building. The intent of the bylaw in terms of having activity at street level will be maintained. Active uses, including the front lobbies, student interaction spaces, and the fitness program, have been located along the Queen's Key frontage to ensure an animated street presence. The proposal includes a learning landscape at the northeast corner of the site, which includes along the frontage of the building, but at gradual higher and stepped-up levels. At ground level, the learning landscape opens to an exterior and an activity along the east facade and northeast corner to create an active corner in main entrance area, and the learning landscape is seen as a primary public space of the building. It animates Sherburn Common and Queen's Key. It anchors the corner with a community classroom, one that is generous and inclusive and inhabits the structure with a variety of spaces and welcome users. And further, there is a fitness use along the western portion of the Queen's Key facade, occupying the remainder of the Queen's Key elevation at a grade and contributing to that active edge. And an entrance also is along the Queen's Key and to also be included. The intent of the bylaw in terms of activity at the street level will be maintained. My interpretation of the original intent was to have retail uses at that level, which are also seen as animated, but there's no retail being proposed since it's an institutional use, which is why we need the variance for the bylaw.
Thank you. So when this says, in this case, zero percent of the length of the north and east frontages, that's not actually accurate, is what you're saying?
Under the bylaw interpretation, it would be asking for retail activity uses to be defined as animated uses, and what we're saying is we're not providing animated uses as defined in the bylaw.
Fair enough. Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, panel members, do you have any further questions? Seeing none? Okay, we'll take it into committee. Well, I'll just start by saying I think it's pretty kind of a cool building, and seems like a lot of thought and discussion has gone into it, and I think what's being proposed is appropriate for the area that it's being placed.
I'd agree, Chair. I'd even go a little further and think it's commendable. This is the first ten-story tall wood building in Toronto, and I know that tall wood has been something that all levels of government and the industry have been looking at for the last several years, and this is a nice harbinger of this type of construction that has gone through all kinds of bedding, all kinds of approval processes, waterfront Toronto and others. I think it's quite a remarkable proposal, and the proponent should be commended for it, and I would wholeheartedly support this approval of this variance.
I totally agree. I think the proposal has everything to suggest it's going to become a landmark piece of the Toronto skyline. It's well-positioned to integrate with an existing community while also addressing some new issues of climate and the use of wood and so forth. I think it's a remarkable building, and the variances are appropriate. The proposal has been thoroughly vetted by every agency that is involved in this area, and I have no difficulty at all in supporting this application.
Yeah, similar. I have nothing else to add. You guys have covered it all.
All right, who wants to make the motion then?
Sure, I'll make the motion.
Don't all speak at once. Okay, I have a motion to approve moved by Mr. Reed. Do I have a seconder?
I'll second. Sorry, Carl, you go ahead.
Seconded by Mr. Clay, all in favor? Your application has been unanimously approved.
I'd love to second Peter's application.
Thanks, Larry.
Okay, the final item this afternoon is item number twenty-one, two sixty Salmon Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey site plan, floor plans and elevations, one photograph from the rear of the property, covering letter from Rebecca Rogers, the applicant, and correspondence in support from numbers two sixty-two, should be adjacent, as well as two sixty-six Salmon Avenue. I'm going to go out on a limb here and say we don't need a presentation, but I'll start by asking the agent to identify himself by giving us name and address.
Good afternoon, committee. Thanks for hearing this matter. My name is Sean Martin. I'm a resident of the property at two sixty Salmon Avenue.
Thank you. Panel members, do you have any questions of the agent? I think this is a very straightforward application, probably the most minor one today. Okay, so we'll take it into committee then. Discussion and a motion.
I'd just like to commend the neighbor's comment about only raccoons like it the way it is. That's one of the better support letters I've heard in a while. Anyway, yeah, as you say, Chair, this is completely straightforward in closing a rear patio, so I move to approve with no conditions.
Okay, I have a motion to approve moved by Mr. Reed, seconded by Carl, even though you're on mute, I think you're seconding... Seconded by Mr. Niffel, all in favor? Your application has been unanimously approved, and...
Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you, and so the time is three oh-five, so could I have a motion to adjourn? Or I'm just adjourning?
Isn't there other business, though?
What's that?
Is there one more file, other business to close a file? Do we have to talk about that?
We did that this morning at the beginning.
Oh, we did, okay. Sorry. Before coffee, Peter.
Yeah, maybe.
We're adjourned at two oh-five.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, everyone. See you.
See you, guys. Thanks.